All right, I will call to order. Our meeting for Evolus City Council Meeting, April 7, 2015. We're here at the Council Chambers in Evolus. It's 5:30 PM. If we'll start with call to order, please.
Councilor Rousey.
Here.
Councilor Purpich.
Here.
Councilor Lillis.
Here.
Mayor Rowan.
Here. Wonderful, thank you very much. Um, we'll start off with our approval of our minutes. We had our town hall meeting minutes on February 26 of 2025. Do you want me to do these individually every time? Joel, does that work?
You can take them as a slate.
Slate it is.
See as a slate.
Love it. Minutes for the City Council Workshop Meeting for March 12 of 25. Minutes of City Council Meeting March 17 of 25. Minutes of City Council Workshop Meeting March 25 of 25. Motion to move on accepting those minutes.
So move.
Moved by Purpich.
Support.
Support by Rousey. Any discussion on those or any changes needed? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Wonderful, thank you. Uh, next up, we'll approve the agenda. Any additions needed? Good, motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Moved by Lillis.
Support.
Support by Rousey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We will move forward with this agenda today, gentlemen, thank you. Uh, we're at the point now for the public comment. If anybody would like to come forward and speak, ask questions, give advice, thoughts, feel free to step up to the podium there and we'll give you your, your time there.
Sure. Hi, I'm Jerry Raskey. Eric Raskey. Uh, we're looking at starting a cannabis farm here. So we thought we'd kind of say, well, I introduce ourselves. Do you ever think about moving into the Woodline Building, South of 53? Yeah, we, it's, we know it's out of state limits, but he has a close city. So you figured we'd just come say aye. Um, they also are going to township meetings and county meetings before we do anything crazy. To make sure there's no major law laws or anything, so. We didn't really prepare anything, uh, so we just came, you know.
Fair enough.
That works.
I'll give you some homework.
Sure.
Yep. Ballpark startup. And it is a mega facility over so many square feet or, because I know there's different variations in the licensing.
Yeah, for the licensing, we applied for the micro business license. So I'm giving it to 5,000 square feet of canopy.
Fine.
So our ballpark will be about 30,000 square feet, which will fit right inside the, um, the newer building on the Woodline group. The smaller buildings that are still used for RVs and boats right now. We actually won't be using that for this part of the operation. Try letting people keep their boats there.
And we know it's a ways off and stuff, so it's plenty of time to work out the bugs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a, a plan where you're looking to create storefront or anything of the sorts?
Um, not at that site. Uh, we are looking at starting a storefront and up here or Minneapolis. Um, but our license allows one store location. But it won't be. Yeah, that's just the.
That's a rule.
Right, right. That's, I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Are you guys looking for a home?
Completely indoors, so nobody will see anything smelling then. Completely inside.
Okay.
Artificial lighting and artificial irrigation.
What do you guys think your timeline is on looking for a storefront in one of the communities?
So, um, from when we get the licenses, we have eight months to be functional apart. Um, once the farm is inspected and passes, then, uh, we can get the store part of it. So roughly, um, a year, two years, yeah. Because, uh, fire asset, asset section before we can go on the second half of it.
Wonderful.
Fantastic.
Anybody have any other questions for the gentleman? Yes?
Thank you. How about Eric? Please hold on a moment, could you repeat your name, please?
Juren.
What's it?
Juren.
I saw that.
J U R E N.
Mr. Raskin?
Raskey, R A S K.
Gotcha, and Eric, it's Raskey, one S or two S's in Raskey?
Uh, the first letter, one S, second letter is.
Give me three of them. He answered that question before.
Wonderful, gentlemen, I wish you the best of luck out there in Woodlinen. As you continue to forward, definitely continue to keep us in the loop and, uh, if you have our email, if it's easier for you, just email us kind of your, your timelines of what you're up to and we appreciate you again for stepping in tonight and letting us know what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you for stopping by. Thank you. Is there anybody else that'd like to take a minute to speak? All right, we will move forward then with, um, appointments, presentations, which are none, so we'll consent to the agenda. Approval of payroll. Uh, March 1st through the 15th of 2025.
You can take these all as a slate too.
Let me, I'm gonna slate these in too. You're the man tonight, Joel. Approval of payroll for March 15th through 31st of 25. An approval of claims for March of 2025. Is there a motion to move on these?
So move.
Moved by Rousey.
Support.
Support by Purpich. Is there any further discussion? Wonderful. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
You would. We have.
Potential conflict of interest.
We'll let it slide this time. We have, you got that in the record, thank you. We will pass, move forward. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Um, new business. I'm gonna flip through my papers here so I can get and follow along one at a time. So the first one up is authorize a director of public works to purchase regular road salt for the 25-26 season from the Cooperative Purchasing Venture State Bid Program or on the open market. Did anybody have, or excuse me, sorry, is there a motion to move?
So move.
Do we have support? Thank you. Any discussion on that, gentlemen?
Are you sure you're getting enough, Jerry? I don't see a lot of zeros on here.
I, I have enough planned for next year, yeah.
So, sorry. I noticed that it says 60 to 100 tons. That, that's a nice pile, I covered it.
If we, if I order 80 for next year, that's how much I kind of need. We have the option, say, I, I think, ah, that may be too much, I can go down 20%.
So.
Or up. So if I feel that we need more than 80, then I can get 100, no more than.
Okay, so.
They give you a little leeway there.
Is this all one, or is this just constantly delivered to you then throughout the year and you paid for it upfront? Oh my.
Nope, we, uh, they deliver it once.
Okay.
Uh, when I call them to, to get it delivered after we haul some sand and everything.
Okay.
Then I call them, they bring it up, they dump it off and we mix it.
And then if you're wrong, then we pay more, is that how it works?
No.
To get more here?
Another city, can I have some sand?
I got you.
I ran out.
I got you, okay.
But we've never, we haven't, we haven't had it go that far yet.
But I mean, as far as with the group, you're not charged more by being under?
No.
Okay, I got you. Okay, perfect, appreciate you explaining that.
And the state does all the work for us. Most cities go through the state bidding program.
Okay. Any further discussion on that, gentlemen? All in favor to approve, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Next up is authorizing the city engineer to call for quotes for the 2025 Phase 3 Fail Road area improvement. More or less, we are opening the door for, for you to go out and get some numbers for us. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, that's, that's true. Jerry, I have a comment on this too.
Yeah, this is something I wanted to discuss here. Um, we have, we got a grant for, uh, 30, almost 32,000 for this project. We had an es, es, uh, engineer's estimate for, I think it was 60, 60-some to begin with. Um, after we looked at it, I, I gave you two different drawings. The first one is the, is the base bid. And that's a total of 64,585, which would be about half grant money. And then after I was looking at it, I asked Ellen to go back to the drawing board and do an add alternate to it with some nicer parking spots, because that place is heavily traveled. Um, so he wrote this up and gave me the add alternate on it, which is another 15,000. So that's what I wanted to talk to the council about. Do you wanna, do you wanna just go with the base bid? Or would you wanna spend a little more and get a little more?
Let's make it nice, Jerry, that's my opinion. I think full parking lots, though, spots would really help, because it is well-used, there's a lot of vehicles down there.
Yeah. And like I said, that's why I brought it to you, because after, after I saw that initial drawing, I thought parking spots would be nice.
We could put it all for quotes and have that as a separate price to our kind of expanded parking areas. And if it comes back very higher, that'd be an option to not award. That'd be, then rebuild kind of how it is today with some minor widening or aesthetic, I guess, areas that are, are improved along the parking area.
Jerry, are we locked in on that, uh, grant award?
Yes. Yeah, we can get any more on that grant. You know, if we go ahead with the project this year, which the grant is for this year, uh, I can ask for another, more money next year on the same grant, you know, same project.
We've, uh, we've already addressed the total cost of this, have we not, Jackie?
I haven't really discussed it with Jack yet. So I, you know, that's the thing, if we wanna go with the more elaborate plan, we'd have to see if we can come up with that more money.
We have budgeted already $33,233.
In addition to the grant?
Yes.
That's our portion and then the grant portion is 30,000, so it's totaled like 65,000.
Yeah, so it'd be 48, 48, 500 with that all, yeah, alternate bid.
How much additional would that come through, did you say?
That's about 16,000, 15?
16K?
Yeah. And, and these are, these are estimates too.
It's right there, wherever it's presented to, Highway 53.
I, I, I think just by these renderings, honestly, I'll, when I looked at them the first time, I thought, well, whoever did the first one just didn't do a very good job, until I better understood what's going on here. And it just shows you that, not you, but me, that by seeing the second one, it's the direction that we should be looking at when we're spending as much money as we are to, well, you use the word beautify that area and invite people in to then turn around and put parking lots in there on top of that, opposed to just watching people angle park and everything else in that area. Gentlemen are open to your own opinion on it, but I was expecting a much larger number between these two renderings when I was looking at them than $16,000. And I get it, what you're saying, that they're quotes that give or take.
Yep, these are estimates, so. Once you bet it out, like Ellen, uh, mentioned, we don't have to accept the add alternate. If it comes back at 40,000, you guys don't have to, you can just accept the base bid.
Well, right now, I know that we don't have a motion, even out there, my fault, I jumped it on you, but we're just, we're giving the directive to saying, yes, it's okay to get these quotes for us. So we're not actually voting per se on.
Under the other.
Yeah, on putting the parking lot in or not, it's just getting the quotes on it.
I'd be interested in seeing a quote.
So is there a motion to, to move?
So move.
Moved by Purpich, second?
Second.
Second by Rousey. Any further discussion, gentlemen? So, just for the people at home, so they better understand, we're, we're giving, we're giving the okay for our engineer to go out and get some quotes to give us two different numbers on the two types of parking lots we're creating inside Fail, Fail Pond area. Uh, so what do you believe is the timeline on seeing quotes from that?
So for quotes, you can do it for like two weeks.
Okay.
So it'd be matter just putting the cover, a full duty, um, a couple things together. So later, you can get something out, um, and we can send it to any vendors that we choose. So it's, we're not hitting that public bidding requirement where it has to advertise for 21 days or anything like that, so it's a little quicker process. You probably can get quotes later this month and maybe there's any, maybe we'll consider them.
What works best for your timeline that you guys have already on this project that you would need to know this by?
That we need the okay from you? Uh, probably the first or second meeting in May?
I thought he was looking for a clock, I'm like, no. Um, I got you, so we don't necessarily need to have it for our next meeting, but we need to have it for the meeting after a month from now?
Yeah, we wanna get a bid out, because contractors, they get locked into projects. They might not get done till the year after.
Let's get, let's get our foot in the door if possible.
Okay.
One more question. Is this the third and final stage of the Fail Pond saga?
It is, we were gonna have three phases, but there are some trails on the backside that we could always look at doing also.
Put it into like a punch list type deal?
Can do a punch list.
Something, but you're thinking, but this is the third and final phase.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, for now.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying.
Rosati Phase 4.
You've got your topic trail.
We did the trails all the way around, all the way around and they came beautiful and, uh, now we do this parking lot, that's gonna add.
It's gotta look nice to Jewel.
I, I guess, this is kind of a side note to it, but have you guys talked at all with the trail, trail hawks regarding needs, wants, or desires that they have, going back to the conversation we had at the workshop about them wanting to put a trail in alongside that mine fence? Does anything you're looking to do in Phase 3?
No, that wouldn't really apply to that, because these trails, they don't want you snowmobiling on these trails anyway.
Sure.
So that'd be a separate thing and I'm still waiting back to hear from RGGS if they can use any of that property.
Right, allowing us to do that. Yeah, like I said, that, that portion's a different conversation.
This would be a whole different animal.
Does not get in the way of what they're hoping for or anything like that?
Nope.
Okay, wonderful, so with that being said, all in favor of allowing them to move forward, getting quotes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up is, and I did discuss this with Jackie, I, I find it nice that you use the word consider in everything that you put, Jerry. Consider quotes for 2025 curb sidewalk impalement replacement. Um, any chance you have of, I'm jumping the gun again, the motion to move?
So move.
Moved by Lillis, second?
Support.
Support by Purpich. All right. Discussion on this, any chance you have a total linear footage on specific project that you're working on, or do you typically do this where you're just saying, hey, tell us what you're gonna charge for linear foot and then later we go find the project that we wanna do?
Yeah, that's more, that's, that's more like it is. What we do is we, we bid it out for unit price. And that gives everybody a fair shot. This year, we actually only had the one bid, the other one didn't bid. Um, and then we have some curb sidewalks, depends on the sizes, so it's all different pricing in there. So as we're doing them, I'm marking them down, I'm on paper like this and adding up the totals and I'm keeping a track of the totals. But a lot of, a lot of projects, we have leftovers from last year that we didn't get finished, because you don't have enough money. Um, so we start those and then we go look for the worst locations. So any, any place that's, that's bad is where we wanna do first.
So to clarify what we're voting then, is we're voting that we wanna utilize the group that gave us the quote for the projects at which you created a later date, not that we are voting on a specific project.
Correct.
Okay.
Voting on the price.
Okay.
Maintenance and replacement mostly.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but they've been doing this, this outfit has been doing it for us for a while. And the work has been good. I inspected it myself and, uh, usually it gets done in a reasonable amount of time and I, they're really, their people are pretty good, so.
There, there's no doubt that I like seeing two, a truck at the, at the work site that's got Evolus, comma, Minnesota on the truck part two.
Yes.
I like that.
Okay.
Makes me feel a lot better about what we're doing. Uh, is there any further discussion? So we'll be voting on accepting this quote, is that what you need from us, Jackie?
Yes, please.
Okay. All in favor of accepting the quote, uh, for the curbs, sidewalk and pavement replacement for 2025? Vote yea.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Nate? Nope. We have, thanks, thank you very much. Okay. I guess we'll consider some more things for you, Jerry.
Yeah, he ain't done it.
He's not done. Up next, we have considering quotes for the lawn mowers that are needed. These were discussed at the workshop that we had. Doesn't matter, March 25th roughly, I think you brought it to us, but nonetheless. Um, five different lawn mowers that you looked into from different places. Uh, is there a motion to move?
Um. We're just considering these quotes.
We can, we can talk about them and then we can table it if we want to and vote on them later. But at least get the conversation moving, yeah?
So move.
Purpich? Second?
Second.
Second by Rousey? Okay, discussions on the table.
Jerry, what do you recommend?
Well, I know in our workshop, when we, when we talked about in our workshop, you were talking about that Toro, uh, Z Master. That's the cheaper of the, of the two. These, both John Deere and Toro are very similar, they're both 72-inch cuts. Uh, one has 35 horse, the other 37, so they're similar. And I heard more positive things during that workshop of the Toro that you guys were thinking of. And you were thinking of two of them at the time?
That's, that's, that is exactly how my child asks for something at the store.
Didn't you say two?
And he was almost gonna say three.
Right, yeah, that's funny.
But that's what was talked about and I mean, you guys can decide what you wanna do, if you wanna wait or think about it.
Well, I guess what the, the discussion was, and maybe you have a better answer now, is obviously with the other ones being at the price mark that they are of, you know, four or five times as much, are we gonna be able to find the manpower, do you believe, to buy a smaller one and have just more people operating?
I believe so, I mean, we're getting some interest already here. So I, I think we're gonna be able to, normally we can get people on riding lawn mowers faster and we can get a trimmer. You know, people go on a trim, but yeah, they, uh, I, I think we'll have enough to keep them going.
Okay.
You know, especially when it, when it's growing, you know? Then you have your downtime and then, you know, we don't have the people out here, so.
Well, for me, I, I prefer the fact that the dealership that has that price, the one that we're looking at, the Toro, is again, a local city, um, business. Not that I have anything against Quad Cities, but I like do seeing Evolus on there. And if this is a, a mower that is encouraged by you.
They're commercial mowers, they all are.
Sure.
I know I'm gonna regret saying this, Councilor Rousey, but, uh, if we did go with, uh, the bid here for the Z Master 4,000 Pro 72-inch cut, if we were to purchase three, you didn't hear that. If we were to purchase three, that would leave two to have operating. And if something went wrong with one, or one needed to be serviced, then the other one would be available. Otherwise, I would just say go with two and, and go from there, but I'm just thinking about downtime and well, possibly storage for you.
Yeah, we all already have a few John Deeres out there.
Oh, so you don't need?
One zero turn and we have another tractor.
Well, so then you only need one.
No.
So kudos, well played, Jim.
Obviously, a bulk of this need comes to turning in and needing something new, but I'm guessing also the the more green space that we have now that needs to be mowed that we'll be able to cover.
Yeah.
Um, are you looking at running then, the two that we pre, currently have plus two more all at once? Is that the, the thought?
Hopefully, yeah. We'll need, we'll need four going if we have that school property and everything else that we have in town in West Evolus, we've got so much grass to mow, you know, two people barely can keep up if it's, if it's growing. So if we could get four mowers, we'll have four more mowers going. And like I said, there's times that the grass isn't growing, it isn't raining, you know, then we just don't bring those people.
Sure.
Coming who's needed.
Does this Z Master come with any type of warranty?
Yeah, they, they both come with one. All, everything comes with a warranty here.
Is that a warranty that's been handled by this business itself, or is that something?
I'd have to talk to them about that, I didn't ask them about, you know, they'd probably do the work on it. You know, but they can sell these, they can't sell the bigger ones. You know, like when we get into them bigger cuts.
Sure.
You know, so I'm sure they would service that mower that they sell.
My biggest question is if something goes wrong with this one, are, are we paying our people to fix it, or is it something that we're able to send right here in town to get it fixed and hopefully back on the, back on the grass again?
Yeah, I'm sure in the first year, it'd be warranted. And it go up to five seasons. Um, otherwise it, you know, we'll work on them once the warranty's out. Hopefully, they're in a whole lot of work on it. I know the other ones have been good. Every mower we have has been pretty good.
And the other mowers that we have, how do they compare to this?
Uh, we have one zero turn, it's a John Deere and I come, that's similar to this. And then we have a tractor with a front blades. And that's a lot slower, less turning radius, you know, bigger turning radius. And, uh, these zero turns are faster, you know, they get more, more done quicker. And they turn on a dime, so a lot better.
This, this fits in your budget completely?
Not as mine, it's in Jack's.
So this fits in your, in your budget than Jackie?
It does, so in December of last year, when the council adopted their discretionary expenditures, we tried to just not ask for everything, knowing that things do happen. So yes, there's capacity to purchase two of these for a total of 25. Is that what you're asking for, Jerry?
Yes.
I'm his lobbyist.
But that's up to you, like I say, we could, we could go with one if you want, but.
I'd like to just cut to the chase and make a motion that we'd like to, lawnmower sport.
Any further discussion on that? Okay. All in favor of purchasing two 35 horsepower Toro Z Master 4,000 Pro 72-inch cut lawn mowers from Five Seasons Sports? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Go down there with a smile on your face, Jerry.
There's more coming.
I know.
Yeah. Okay. Next up is, uh, discussion regarding Catalyst Website Proposal. Uh, for anybody at home or anybody here that doesn't know what that is, we have the company named Catalyst that is, um, the provider for our website. Uh, the website that we all love. Um, with that being said, uh, Steph has been amazing and she's working with different groups. Um, and found out that Catalyst is actually, um, supporting a lot of other cities in the area and surrounding states, and they have amazing websites. Um, gentlemen here, you've been provided with a few of them, I'm not sure if you had a chance to look or not, but I think it's more of what we were all thinking when we started discussing this a while ago, just having access. So I guess my question for you, uh, Jackie, would be, we need to make a motion, we need to move and create a web redesign at roughly $3,000, correct?
Correct.
And then do we break this down for every cost that I saw on this, or do we just?
So what you can do as the first item is for the website redesign, okay? And then, um, for this year, and then there's also a mass notification software. Some people call that Constant Contact or other things where after we get our website up and running, people can subscribe all yous to receive messages we would send out, be it email, text, um, telephone. Think back when they instituted the school district where they would, they could call you or text you, kind of the same thing. So we can do that as an add-on for 4,500, okay? For year one, and then they have an uplift, good word, let's start using that one, um, for subsequent years. So if you wanted to move ahead of both of that redesign and then the mass notifications, we could do that.
But Jackie, on this, uh, note from Steph here, you can have website design, or you can have website design and mass notifications. Or you can go to the third choice. Or you can go to the third choice, which I don't think is, for us right now, is in the thing, so your, your suggestion would be to take the website plus the mass notifications?
Some of the, one local city that's on here, if anybody at home wants to kind of see what, um, Catalyst can also do outside of ours is, the local school, or local city, excuse me, is Chisholm. So one right down the road, if anybody online's like, I wanna check out what this company can do, Chisholm's is just kind of an example. And there's, there's a slew of different cities also, like I said, in the area that was shared with us, but if anybody wants to see a local one, it's just kind of nice to take a look at that one. Jackie, go ahead.
Yep, sorry about the sidebar. I was just confirming with Stephanie that the second item is both the website redesign and mass notifications for forty-five hundred in year one. Okay, and then, um, in year two, it's forty-two forty. We would just budget that one.
I mean, for me, I think that being able to have notifications to people is kind of the direction that we're looking at going as a city. We're not looking to keep information from anybody, anything we can put in their hands however they want it, whether it's through a a text or an email or, or whatever it might be, I think is the direction we've all been discussing about going. So I, I like the idea of including the mass notification implementation. Did anybody have any questions for Steph or any further discussion on anything at all? And Steph, this is a four-month process from the day that we vote kind of a deal? Okay, all right. And what I would like to do is if, um, we decide to move forward with this is at our next workshop or our next meeting that we discuss some things that we'd like to see on there specifically. Um, and Steph can work with them in letting them know bars, pictures, things like that, if we decide to move forward with this. The other option is spend no money, keep it the way that it is and
That's not enough.
And not show up at town hall meetings, because you're gonna get, you're gonna get railroaded, so. Um, any further discussion? Nope. I'm going to say this with mass notifications, so I'm gonna just point that out right away, okay? So, all in favor of moving forward with the website redesign and mass notifications? Yep, go for it.
Did we have a motion on the table?
We do not. Come on, Steph, you need to be better at this. It's my fault. All right.
Motion.
By Rosie? Second, support by Purpich? Any further discussion, gentlemen? Okay, so I'll say it again. This is to move forward with the website redesign and mass notifications with roughly a four-month wait time for information to be completely done. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. So, if you would put Jackie on our next, um, workshop, I'd like to discuss more with the group and Steph, what we're, we're looking for. Steph and I had a brief conversation as I was walking through offices this afternoon about things we'd like to see, so I'd like the community to get involved in that a little bit too, so. All right, next up is the memorandum of understanding for the St. Louis County Multidisciplinary Team for Vulnerable Citizens. I read through this. Can you enlighten us, Jackie, on where this?
Well, we are lucky enough to have Teresa Elbram, our EMS director, and she could enlighten all of us if she likes to come with the board.
Uh, what this is, is I'm on a group with vulnerable adults and, um, we're mandated reporters, of course, on the ambulance. So this memorandum, memorandum of understanding through the county is for, um, all of the agencies that are involved in this, and Evolith PD is is part of this also, so I think this could just cover for the whole city, um, so we can discuss cases. And even though we have HIPAA and whatever else, this is just saying that we all understand this is private information and how can we work together to fix these things, so that's really all it is.
Okay. You, uh, you received, the, the county received, uh, the, this grant or whatever they call it, an award in twenty-twenty-three, and it's still ongoing? Is that what I'm understanding? They're still ongoing and you're still receiving funds from the federal government for this?
For which one or what?
Well, it says you, the, the county was awarded from the United States Department of Justice to establish and enhance the multi, you know. So you, the county must have had, got some money for it, and it's not gonna be rescinded here in the next week or so?
Right, I hope not, well, who knows?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think so, and there's no modality, anything with it for us anyway, so.
Oh, it's just, oh, it's.
It's just a memorandum of notice that we're part of the group and we keep our motions.
Oh, okay. Okay, I got it. That was a little hard to understand at first.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there a motion to move forward?
So move.
Second?
Support?
Um, Joel? In something like this, how do you want the wording to be for the vote? Is it a memorandum of support?
Uh, yeah, authorizing signature of the MOU. So, yeah.
Okay. Authorizing signature of the MOU showing support for the St. Louis County's Public Health and Human Services Department and the HIPAA portion of it. Thank you for your time in explaining that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, next up is approve the medical director agreement between MGM Medical Director Consortium and the City of Evolith. So the way that it's been briefed to me is our ambulance service must have a medical doctor as a person that is, um, not so much leads, but is, is responsible, I guess, more or less, for both parties. Is this something, Joel, that we're good to move forward with? I'll be honest. You guys hand me stuff in this packet sometimes, and I am reading way outside of my jurisdiction, so that's why you sit here and say, yes, this is appropriate.
It is. The city administration and I, with the consortium that we've contracted with to do this medical director role, have had some back and forth on the insurance requirements, and this is a agreed upon, uh, modification of the language that was presented back in February twenty-four. We've been operating under that, um, authorization, but it still isn't signed. So this is authorizing the signature of that agreement with the proposed language that you have in front of you, especially on page four regarding the insurance requirements, uh, effective back to that February six twenty-four date. Hopefully, hopefully that helps. But this is just to clarify what the insurance requirements are with that consortium of how we're moving forward with our medical director as required.
And I think it should, can be explained as to why we have to have this. Why do we, why is there a doctor that has to, I'm, and I, and I understand it. I just want to, I want the people to understand why we have, have this going on.
So every licensed ambulance service in the state of Minnesota and probably outside needs a medical director who is in charge of anything. We're very fortunate to have Dr. Julie Hool as ours, and, um, she was an emergency physician local from the area and was actually one of the first three hundred in the United States to get her doctorate in EMS management. So, um, we're really lucky to have her, and she's an EMT and does first responder stuff and all kinds of things in addition to her, um, ER physician roles. So, um, we have to have a medical director because of that, and they sign off for, um, I give her the paperwork for our inspections and our medications that we provide and the training and everybody's up-to-date certifications, and she comes in and verifies, and she'll do skills verifications and whatever to make sure that we're all up to snuff. And then, then of course, if there's any kind of, um, interesting calls or sometimes, you know, there's the gray area or whatever, we can consult with her, I'll send her things or, you know, good and bad and say, hey, can we fix this, or is it, is this good or is whatever, so she is, um, she's our sounding board and we are so fortunate, but that's a really good question.
I mean, the people need to understand what, what it was. Personally, myself, uh, I have nothing but good things to say about our service, and I'm glad that someone's keeping you guys in line.
Right, we need it. Yeah, thank you.
So the only thing was about, was the changes to the professional liability aspect of things, correct, Joel?
Correct.
Okay.
Liability insurance.
Yeah, okay. Any further discussion? Look at Steph's like, he didn't, he didn't? I know. Uh, motion to move?
So move.
Second?
Support.
Lilis? Abstaining. It's basically my boss.
Out of respect. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One abstaining. Thank you, motion carries. Next up is a quote from North Shore Compressor for Cascade System to fill our SCBA's. Uh, Chief, you're here, why don't you take, uh, podium and explain a little bit of what you have going on, and you can let everybody know right away that all this money is on hand, so nobody's hearts are racing before you get too far.
Right, uh, all the money's coming from our equipment replacement fund, which we put money into out of the budget every year. Built up to what we need to purchase this. Um, I believe it was twenty-three we got in the SCBA's. Our current cascade system that fills the bottles on the SCBA's is, does not have the capacity to fill our tanks to what they need to be filled to. And we have safety issues with it because the, we don't have a proper fill station. There's no way to secure the bottles when you're filling it, that they were to rupture. That could cause catastrophic failure and injure somebody, so we wanna, we wanna eliminate that possibility. As, you know, the quote was, this quote from North Shore was forty-seven thousand? As a safety tactic for when we're on fire, fire scenes, for how much air we have in, in the tanks, for just general operations and then if somebody's happens to be trapped, it gives us that much more opportunity to do it.
Question. What you're telling us now then is that when your bottles come off the rack, they are not filled to capacity?
At this moment, no.
At this moment, hasn't since we got the new bottles back in twenty-three.
Correct, yeah, we've had this one turned up as much as we can.
Personally, I, I find that unacceptable. So, just so you know where I'm coming from, that's, that shouldn't be, gotta rectify that.
Absolutely. So you may not know this answer, Chief, but moving forward, what do you believe is, um, this setup, this apparatus is life, lifetime? Are we gonna see two years, five years, ten years? What do you usually see out of this?
Our current one is about thirty years old.
Thirty?
Yeah, so you're, you're looking at probably about twenty years.
Okay.
And then, and our, uh, our current packs, the bottles are good for about fifteen, they'll have replaced bottles eventually, but they'll stay at the same PSI that they currently are. And our, our packs, they have a lifetime warranty with them, so the harnesses themselves. In theory, we should not have to replace any, anytime soon.
Have you, did, have you just realized this now, or have you known for a while?
Well, we've known, but we've been trying, we were working with a compressor company trying to
Oh, okay.
Get it up, and we've maxed out, so that's what we can do with it.
I feel like Counselor Rosie, I don't wanna see you guys going in there with half a tank. No way.
Ain't quite that bad, but yeah.
Yeah, no, it doesn't matter. Your firefighters should know that their equipment is up to spec and ready to go.
Correct.
So by bringing this, uh, unit in, is there any other alterations you need to make to the building at all, or does it just kind of a snug right-in fit to move on?
Uh, this system should fit pretty much right where the other ones currently fit in.
Perfect.
Shouldn't have to make any modifications.
Perfect.
And just for the mayor's consideration, uh, the Public Safety Committee did meet with the chief and Jackie regarding this issue, and, um, you know, we concur with your conclusion that it's not acceptable, that we have to avoid the risk to our firefighters, um, both on the scene as well as at the fire hall. All we need is one incident to create a, you know, just a terrible tragedy. And we identified, uh, a funding mechanism during our meeting, and Jackie could probably allude to what we decided there, so there are some funds available to deal with this now.
So some years ago, I'm gonna say maybe ten years ago, we started, um, budgeting money to set aside every year to put in a replacement in a variety of apartments, and so what happens, that we set them aside, we use some of that money to buy all of the SCBA's in twenty-twenty-three, and we have sufficient funds in there to purchase this catalyst system.
Wonderful. So my last question on this, and not that it changes my vote at all, but excuse me, what, what kind of funds are left in your account after paying for this? Did we just get to the exact number we needed just today, so we're moving forward, or is this?
No, I don't, probably what, twenty thousand left, maybe?
I, so yeah, I didn't bring that by with me, but I have a guess, uh, yeah, fifteen, twenty.
So it doesn't leave us in a spot where there's other necessities you still have, love it. Like I said, it doesn't change my opinion on it, I was just curious. Any further discussion?
Nothing good.
You're good? All right, make a motion to move on this cascade system for the purchase from North Shore Compressor Fire Department.
So move.
Support? Lilis? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next up is to modify the easement agreement between the City of Evolith and Brandy's Building Limited Liability Partnership. Uh, motion to move? Motion?
I'll make the move.
Motion by Purpich? Support by Rosie?
Yes, sir.
Uh, discussion?
This, uh, this agreement, you know, it, it's, it's our standard one, it's not anything earth-shattering. I don't see any reason why we can't go forward with this.
I, I guess the biggest thing for the people is to know that we're, we're changing it from twelve hundred dollars per year to one dollar per year to try and make it um, a number that Brandy's or Apple Tree, I guess, is what's in there now, but nonetheless, can utilize this space with one, a little less of a, um, overhead expense would be the way to look at it, so. Uh, Joel, you went through this, you changed everything?
So, um, yeah, what we're, what we're looking at updating here is the, the amount for the term. Uh, so as the mayor said, going from thirteen forty-two to a, a dollar for the consideration. That's for the easement, and then updating the parties that the agreement is with because of the sale that took place. And then, I, I believe they're looking at using part of the city parcel that's the parking lot. And my recommendation for that is that it would be, uh, a land license for that front, so the city-owned lot currently is not included in the access easement agreement for the daycare. Uh, and a land license would allow them to then use that parking lot uh, for the time being, without additional cost, uh, until the city has another use for that, uh, if it gets developed. And then it wouldn't be in, you know, in part of the access agreement to provide lawful access for them, for their, for their building. Uh, so I, I hope that makes sense, but yeah, those are the things that we're looking at updating on this agreement. And, and with those changes, we'd be looking for an approval from the city for the easement agreement to include those changes.
With that change, if we are to find some other business that's looking to go in there, we are not looking to take the parking lot then, correct?
Well, we're not gonna be giving the parking lot, we're gonna be giving them a license to use it in the interim. Because, uh, you know, we, if, if it's, uh, if its greatest use is gonna be for something else, then in the future, if another development comes in there that needs to use that, then that would be available.
Sort of like a lease?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's similar to that, but it's, we do this with, uh, city-owned properties under a land license agreement. So they need the easement to be able to get to their property because they don't have, they don't own frontage, and that's the, the main part of the agreement. Uh, the side, side part for the parking lot, it will be a, a separate land license. Uh, the side, side part for the parking lot, it will be a, a separate land license.
What would be the outcome for them if we found another business then? And we need to take that lease?
They would, they would still use their parking lot. They still have their own parking lot on their property. This would just be allowing them to also use the additional parking lot that we have.
Gotcha.
Yep, it's an additional one that's owned by the city until someone else would develop there and use that.
Wow, that, that was stated, makes you feel a little, little.
No, we're not gonna be taking away their parking.
Yep, you can have your business here and you can drive a car here, there's no place to park. Yeah, right, we're not doing that. Okay. Yes, thank you.
So I wanted to clarify that if you could approve the changes to the easement agreement, that would be great. I'd like to draft that land license and bring it to you for approval. And part of the reason is mostly Stephanie and I have been thinking of it for a long time, and first of all, it's really hard to find things, and so that's why we like things on a agenda, we won't fire in the bottom, so we'll draft that land license with Joel's blessing and bring it to you. But the parking lot itself.
So look, we're, we're voting on just.
The name change and the dollar.
And do we need to state in there at all regarding the lease portion of it? Or that's what you're working on for the next one?
That'll be a separate.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Any further discussion, gentlemen? Okay, all in favor of the name change and the dollar amount for this easement agreement with currently Brandy's? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Wonderful. Called doing a good thing. All right, next up, the resolution authorizing conveyance of real estate and purchase agreement for lots one and two from block one of Carter Circle. So, we agreed to move forward, this is now voting to finalize on the sale. Motion to move?
So move.
Move by Purpich? Second?
Second.
Second by Rosie. Any further discussion?
I for one am happy to see this, uh, this land being put to use and those lots being occupied. How many more do we have up there, Jackie?
We have, I'm gonna draw a diagram, so, um, two lots, right to the south.
That's what I thought, something like that. Two more available, people.
Perfect. Uh, any further discussion on it? All in favor of finishing that sale? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next up is, uh, consider recommendation for casual pay. When you hear the word consider?
Must be Jerry.
That must be Jerry. So, um, I'll, before I get ahead of myself, motion to move on this memorandum?
So move.
I'll say move by Lilis. Is that second then by Purpich?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, what we're looking at is looking to raise the, the pay rate for casual employees effective May first of this year. So adult casuals who were once making sixteen dollars an hour will now make eighteen. Student leave casuals will go from fifteen dollars an hour to seventeen dollars an hour. And student casuals will go from thirteen dollars to fifteen dollars per hour. And just off a real brief conversation with Jackie, we figure it's probably been about five years or so since this number has been altered.
Twenty-twenty-one was our last, uh.
Four years.
Bump up.
Next time you ask for something.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring it to your attention, um, it is harder and harder to get, uh, casuals of any sort, the older casuals, the younger casuals. Uh, they can go somewhere else and make a lot more money and, uh, like I said, the last raise was twenty-twenty-one. So I'm just thinking, you know, after talking with the personnel committee, possibly two dollars or anything else you guys wanna recommend?
Go ahead.
Nothing.
I think, I think I actually, you know, we, we discussed this last summer that we couldn't, at first we couldn't get anybody to, to, to work. And we finally filled out. But it was almost last minute. I would hope that, uh, you know, these aren't bad wages for a couple hours a, a week, you know, you're working six to three, six to two, Jerry? That's what we did in the summer last year?
In the summer, we go to the six to two thirty shift.
What, you know, you can get there, you can get off, you can get to wherever you have to be at, after two o'clock, I, I I'd say that's a pretty good deal for people to sign up and.
And this isn't only for summer casuals, you know, we have casuals throughout the year helping with recycling, uh, painting, other types of jobs also.
Correct.
It's not just the mowing that they'd be getting bumped up.
And prior to our conversation, and I, I didn't write down the note when we were talking, I look back, what did we guess was roughly the amount of hours that we were talking about? Cause it was X amount of people, X amount of hours per summer or whatever it was per year, equalling how much dollars we're talking about this increase being?
The increase would be, uh, I, I look back at twenty-three and twenty-four, it's about five thousand dollar increase. With the number of hours and the people that we had working. And each year's different, uh, in twenty-three, we didn't have as many people, but they worked more hours. In twenty-four, we had more people, so they worked less hours. It kinda worked out about the same. So after I figured out the hours and how much they make, it was about five thousand. And we do have that much budgeted because I did have to make the budget for the school property this year. So we do have a part-time budget there too. So that would cover in the budget, we wouldn't have to find money elsewhere unless, you know, unless they're working a ton. You know, that'd be, that'd be the biggest thing. But most of the hours do come from the summer.
So this number here, do you know how it compares to, excuse me, summer county help or Minnesota Energy or Minnesota Power that might go out and get casual help in the summer? Do we know how this compares?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not positive about that. I know they could go to McDonald's and make more than what they make here right now. Uh, I know some other towns pay a little more. They don't get as many kids, you know, use as many kids, but, um, more casuals, but, uh, yeah, they, this, this I think will bring them up to pace with other areas.
Okay.
And hopefully attract more, you know, attract some. You know, we used to, we used to have a list that we could only work the kids two weeks. Some kids never even got to work. Now, if we get five, six good kids in the summer, keep them all summer.
And I guess the reason why I asked what I asked is because if another dollar you think is going to truly bring those people here away from those other ones, you're talking an additional twenty-five hundred dollars for the year based off of your five thousand dollar number. And we're just gonna take that from your pay, but that's not the point. But, and I'm just, in, in reality, right? I'm just trying to make sure that we're being competitive. This is two, I'm saying if we add one more.
Oh.
It'd be an additional twenty-five hundred dollars out of the budget, and I mean.
Mayor, I, I can't guarantee that we're gonna get more kids because of it. I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping we can get a nice group. Instead of them having to go somewhere else.
You don't have any more daughters you can force to work?
Well, I don't, well, probably.
Uh, this number, Jackie, does it work within a budget of what's going, what, what he has budgeted as far as like a payroll? Is there more room in this? What happens if we need to hire somebody new to work at the school location?
Good question. So I'm confident in Jerry's numbers within all the departments that he oversees to cover the costs for this increase in capital pay. I, I don't, I don't go look at the school campus budget to see if there's some people, some more people following there besides some of the other law. I don't believe we did.
No, no, we, we, when I put a budget number on the school, I was just guesstimating. I mean, a budget is a guesstimating. When I looked at the school and, and saw how many hours it's probably gonna take to mow that and keep it mowed during the busy season, um, I budgeted that number for mowers. It could possibly be where you don't use as many on mowers at that area, so then you could use them somewhere else, but I don't have a part-time budgeted to.
And, and maybe I wasn't clear, I apologize, I didn't, not want you to know that number. I didn't know if, when the school becomes ours and we are having a person go in there and, and clean and maintain or whatever, that's another person you're, I'm guessing you're gonna need to hire for, or you're gonna be taking somebody off what they're already doing to do it. So my question is, is that a number that in your, your budget, is that number also there on top of what you're asking for the increase?
No. I didn't budget for that.
We don't know what that would be?
I don't, I can't guesstimate what that would be. It depends on what you guys wanna use that building for, how much you wanna keep it open, I'd have to know that.
Sure, I understand that. I just wanna make sure that if we do this, we're just being competitive with everybody else that's doing the same help. What keeps a, a kid from wanting to go to Target for the summer McDonald's? I'd like to have the, the kids that wanna work hard. And student leave casuals that wanna work hard, be in our community and not run over to Virginia and help out their, their retail business. Jackie?
I really believe that I was a kid, I wanna come here and I wanna work from day three to Friday from six to two thirty, have plenty of time for my social activities and my weekends not be broke, unlike working at Target a ton of times. I think that's a big deal is.
Where you get an afternoon shift, or where you get an afternoon shift or a weekend that you have to work at? You know, I, I agree, I, I think that's incentive enough. I think if we just kept it like this, let's just see.
Okay.
Let's just fill it out, see what we.
All right. Any further discussion on that? No? Okay, all in favor of raising these to the numbers that were previously stated? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you very much. Um, inquiry regarding the police service. Sir, would you like the floor?
I guess I would, uh, have counsel loans.
He's like, absolutely no, why'd you say that? Mr. Ness, if you'd like, Officer Ness, if you'd like, take the floor, please do.
I guess I would have counsel loans, he's a little action.
Oh, absolutely, sure. Yeah, that, that works just fine, thank you. I'm sorry, I heard you say that and I.
I put the spot on, Brian.
Yeah. Well, before we go too far, Brian, I gotta make motions, you're getting ahead of us. Motion to proceed with, um, well, I guess this inquiry, I guess would be the way to put it.
So move.
Support. Thank you. Uh, discussion?
Well, just, uh, as the Public Safety Committee's memo indicated, um, I was approached by a Gilbert city councilor uh, who asked to have a meeting with Public Safety Committee. And looking for a proposal or a number on what, uh, Evlith could provide police service to the city of Gilbert for. Now, since I was not comfortable in having that conversation without the council's full, or the full council's blessing, that's why I'm uh, decided to bring that to the council for discussion. So essentially, um, a counselor from Gilbert, counselor Pontin, and as part of a committee with another counselor that are exploring, um, options or opportunities that they might have in the city of Gilbert to reduce expenses relating to police services in their city. So they are, they're looking at a number of different ways and this is, you know, by no means, um, nothing is definitive, it's just that they're, they're exploring ways they can save money and one of the ways that they thought would be to look elsewhere, uh, for another police agency to provide services for them, for their community. You know, not only did I feel it was, um, important that the whole, the full council weigh in on this, you know, I think that, um, from my view, this is gonna be a pretty sensitive issue for some people. Particularly in the city of Gilbert, but also perhaps in the city of Evlith. Um, you know, we, we would have to, um, come to terms with whether or not we even want to provide a proposal for services given the, um, political, um, or potential political backlash from it. Our two agencies, um, the two police departments work together famously and have for many, many years. You know, they back each other up, they've got agreements in place for providing services in each other's communities and so forth. And, um, for us to, um, take it upon ourselves to offer police services to displace their police department might be, uh, might be a real tough one for me to swallow. But I do see an opportunity. I think that I, I have long been a proponent of, uh, doing whatever we can as a city to reach out and share services with our neighboring communities in one form or another. And I guess I, I could see the value of a discussion being had between the two communities as to, uh, potentially, um, merging the two police departments into one police department. And, uh, you know, I would, I would definitely be in favor of that conversation. So I guess that's my two cents.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I might be wrong and according to Elaine, I often am. Does not Gilbert provide police protection to the city by law, the council?
Yes, they do, and they are contracted to do so.
Area quite a bit more.
So it would be, it would be, um, similar to the contract that we have with Fail.
I'm not reading the contract, I'm thinking of how thin we are already, now we do fail. You know what I mean? We've got so many officers, but something like this entail increasing the size of our force and stuff of that nature. And let it be known that I am not an advocate for anyone losing their job.
Well, that's why I start to question, I mean, are we?
That bothers me a lot.
And I get that this is a conversation, I totally get that, but we would essentially have to take on their entire force in order to maintain what we're already doing. Maybe not the entire force, but we have to bring people on. I mean, it's not like we're gonna try to cover the same amount of area that Evlith and Gilbert were.
And, uh.
Deputy Chief?
It did sound like that, if they were to go forward with that, they would probably get rid of Bylaw, they could probably offer that too. The East Range Police Department, so just within the city of Gilbert and Evlith for help.
I do like the consolidation little aspect. I do like that idea of consolidation. Cause the mutual aid works wonderfully now. We've worked together with these guys and it's always been just great, so. But I don't wanna see anybody kicked to the curb.
With, I, I guess my question on this is, is this, and I am not speaking poorly on any councilor from any, but is this count, are these counselors reaching out to us on behalf of the city? Or are they doing something that they're working on themselves right now to report back later?
As I understand it, they have the blessing of the full council.
Okay. That's what I was looking for, thank you.
I talked to, uh, I talked to, uh, Mayor of Gilbert yesterday and he said they auth, they did authorize, uh, the two people to go out and make inquiries to us. My thought on, I was kinda surprised, you know, when I was approached, you know, in the first time about it and then I got to thinking, you know, we're in West Evlith, we got the city of Evlith proper, and we got Fail. And that's a large chunk of area and and consolidation to me would seem to be, uh, a way to go. Certainly, um, you can cut this certain amount of costs off of, uh, each city's budget and still keep the same amount of people, cause it's gonna take that. Uh, I don't know how much savings that's gonna approve, but I'd give it a try.
For on that, probably not a great deal, you know, of providing that it was decided not to, uh, lay off anybody.
Right.
But with attrition, you know, on both departments, um, over a period of years, and don't get me wrong, if we started tomorrow on, on some talks to consolidate the two departments, we're looking at five years before we actually get there.
Yeah.
But I think, I think that it certainly is worth the conversation and maybe political atmosphere right now is, is right to start that, that discussion and perhaps if the two police chiefs were to get together and, and discuss perhaps something like an independent entity coming in and, and studying the issue. I know there's probably some grant funding available, um, for that type of venture where someone would come in and take a look at all the particulars between the two agencies and then would make a recommendation on how we could implement. would make a recommendation on how we could implement, you know, the, uh, consolidation over a period of time. I think that would be really desirable from my view.
Well, I guess today what we need to do is vote to continue conversations with the city of Gilbert. Not that we're doing anything to say we are doing it, just we're voting to to have those convos that are needed to better understand how things would work, how things can go, et cetera.
I would, I would entertain the motion that we continue to, uh, inquire with the city of Gilbert regarding the police service.
I'll second that.
All right. With that being said, is there any further discussion? Deputy Chief, did you have anything you'd like to add before we vote?
Do not.
Okay. Thank you very much. And my apologies for using the word officer earlier. It's no disrespect. You've worked hard for where you're at and I appreciate you. So with that being said, um, all in favor to continue conversations with the city of Gilbert regarding, um, mutual police aid? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry. Are you looking to take the lead on that?
Well, Public Safety Committee certainly could do that. I think that's your ball, but.
I, I, I would appreciate if that would be you. I should have put that in.
In the motion too.
You may cement them in.
For, for Mr. Lilis and the rest of the board to handle it. All right. Thank you very much. Um, next up is Half a Tree.
Oy.
This was fun. I appreciate you, Mr. Lilis. Um, a letter from the code enforcement officer regarding declaration of building conden, condemning of fifteen oh two West First Street.
Well, Mayor, first thing I have to say is I am going to participate in this conversation as the code enforcement officer and not as the city councilor.
More than fair. Appreciate that. And Rannicker Store.
Rannicker.
That is the way that we'll put this. We can talk about the person's name all we want, I guess, but at the end of the day, people at home, people watching are going to know it as Rannicker Store.
It's the name on the sign.
It was the name of the building I was told not to go into. So it works simple. Um, with that being said, uh, do we have a motion to, uh, to move on, um, this conversation of how we move forward? It more or less is what you need, correct?
Yes. I'll make the motion. I mean, continue.
Motion by Purpich, second?
I guess there's no other option but to second it.
It's on you, Mr. West Evlith.
I'll second her.
Okay.
I'll cry when it comes to all of them. A lot of memories on them steps.
You didn't cry when the friends in, excuse me, you didn't call when the Franklin School fell off.
You have no idea.
I'm giving you garbage.
I lived by there forty-six years.
This, discussion. So, um, Brian, as you change hats for a moment, do you want to just, instead of doing the fourteen page version, do you want to kind of give us the half page version of what, what we're discussing here and how we need to move forward?
Okay, essentially, um, there was a recent, or a complaint received last summer from a concerned citizen and, and as code enforcement officer, I investigated and inspected the building and found it to be what I determined to be, um, as it's spelled out in the condemnation or danger to public safety. And, um, I condemned the building and I ordered it to be demolished by the owner. Um, and set the, uh, compliance date, uh, January initially and then, uh, at the owner's request extended it to March fifteenth of twenty twenty-five. After March fifteenth, I rechecked the property to find that the building had not been demolished and removed as ordered and, um, I had contact with the owner of the property who informed me that they, um, were unable to do so because of extenuating circumstances. And, um, the new plan that the owner laid out for that property was to divide the parcel and to, uh, give the parcel, or part of the existing parcel to, um, the owner's daughter and the other part, the part that the buildings are on, to Habitat for Humanity. Uh, the owner also indicated they had returned, or retained an attorney to represent them in that, uh, venture, both to split the lot, um, and, and to date, that attorney has not come forward to make any requests, uh, of the city that I'm aware of. As the code enforcement officer and by, uh, city code, the newly adopted city code, it's my duty to report this matter to the full council and the full council then would make a determination, the best way to proceed in the, in the matter, uh, basically the failure to comply with, uh, an order of demolition. Um, may I suggest, Mayor, um, that perhaps the council might want to consider this matter, um, at a, um, specify, or specify a hearing on that matter and, and that being the only, um, uh, agenda item for that particular meeting and hold that, um, hearing at a later date.
Um, I'm, I'm glad you, uh, brought that up as far as a special meeting for this and to get the persons involved, uh, at that meeting so we can address them directly. I have looked over the property myself from, you don't have to go very far to see how bad it is and, and certainly if something should happen and either a fire and or young child get in, in there somehow, that child would be in very serious problems. Windows are broken and things, uh, I, I, I would like to, go with Counselor, or Officer Lilis's, uh, recommendation that we set up, uh, a hearing or such, uh, discussion that will need to be taken at the time.
Done everything?
I'm going to be sorry to see it go. When its day was quite the grand and it was one of the main stages in West Evlith. And, uh, it had a nice little bar underneath that my poor grandpa got yanked out of a couple of times by grandma. She was on his way between the pit and home. However, I'm just going to be sorry to see it go because it's something I grew up without her and the pressed tin outside is unique. And, uh, you know, it was an old time store. It was nice, but things change. I'm done.
You're done?
Yeah.
Some things do change.
Yes, they do.
You look very well today.
Did you notice I put on my funeral clothes for this meeting?
I, I did notice that you got dressed up at the library meeting. I was like, look at this guy. Yeah, you're welcome for noticing. Joel, what are the steps that we need to do properly to move forward in this conversation with them? Do we have to call it something specific? Do we just?
I would follow the recommendation for scheduling a hearing and taking it up at that, at that meeting.
Okay. So by calling it a hearing is the proper words. Okay. All right. I would agree with everybody. I, I, I don't like watching history disappear, but at the same time, when it's time to go, it's, it's time to go. Um, so with that being said, do you need me to make a motion for that part? Cause we just moved forward with the conversation. So I need a motion to move that we recommend setting up a hearing with the other party regarding property, um, in West Evlith there.
So.
Support. Rousey, Purpich, any further discussion?
I would just have the motion address the address of fifteen oh two First Street.
You got it. So voting and recommending, uh, set up a hearing regarding address fifteen oh two West First Street in Evlith with the owner's property. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next up is the removal of police officer from probational status. Uh, with that being mentioned, uh, Brent Matheson is fulfilled his need as a probational officer. Uh, Deputy Chief, do you have anything further to say?
Uh, he is a lateral transfer from another agency. Uh, remember when we hire a new officer, it's a one year probationary period, but he says some years of experience, um, we shortened that and the chief felt that, uh, he's been a great asset to the department and can be removed from probationary status. That's what I'm saying.
All right. Do we have a motion to move?
I will make the motion to move forward with, uh, removal of probationary status for the officer.
Uh, second?
Support.
Any further discussion?
Wasn't there another hire rate around that time also? Is that one coming due pretty soon?
Yep. I see this letter here that the chief has the wrong date. Yeah, she started last week, August.
Okay.
And then the next one, I guess, in the next meeting or two will be, uh,
The other one.
There'll be another one, a little letter coming.
Perfect.
Wonderful. All right. All in favor of removing from probational status Officer Brent Matheson, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Brent. All right. Um, next up is consent to an Iron Range half marathon on August sixteenth of twenty twenty-five. Um, Sarah Chiketo is putting on this Iron Range half marathon. I'm sure anybody that looked online at the agenda can see kind of where the map is on it. It just kind of touches base in Evlith just a wee bit. And they are just more or less touching base regarding letting us know what's happening.
Is, uh, excuse me, I'm looking at the map that they provided. It's the, the red line is the course?
Go ahead.
The red line is just the parcel.
That's our parcel.
That's our parcel.
But where's?
And the trail is on the west side of the parcel on the north side of thirty-seven and it crosses over thirty-seven, right?
Okay. Are they aware of the construction that's going to be going on there during this half marathon?
I believe that she's very knowledgeable.
Might add a little more to that marathon.
It can be more than a half marathon. As long as, you know, as she contacted, uh, Mendat and, uh, the people involved?
I'm sure she has. I, I'll bet that she may have been meeting last week in a rational meeting. She's pretty.
Okay.
I say we let them do it.
I, I, I'll make the motion that we, uh, agree to, uh, we consent to have the half marathon.
I'll second.
Motion by Purpich, second by Rousey. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is resolution accepting donation from the library, the summer reading program. Uh, this one is, like I said, for the library for the summer reading program of one thousand dollars. Is there a motion to move to accept that donation?
So move.
I'll second.
Purpich, Rousey, any further discussion?
I just want to say, um, I appreciate, uh, the donation. Uh, I know our librarians do a great job in the summer with this. Uh, we've had some problems last year when we were doing all the construction and stuff and it was kind of tough to continue that program. But I think everything is order, in order down there now and running really smooth. And I really appreciate this donation from United Way of Northeastern Minnesota. I thought that that was great.
I was kind of excited when I turned the page and saw that it was United Way and not, not that I don't want to see our locals, but seeing something of this.
Yeah.
Looking to add, add dollars and books, et cetera, into, into our community. So, any further discussion? Anything to say? All in favor of accepting this donation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Last is resolution accepting donation for the library again. This is an anonymous, uh, donation of one hundred dollars.
So move.
Motion by Purpich, second?
Second.
Second, Rousey. Any discussion?
I just want to say, uh, to the people in the city of Evlith that this hundred dollars, uh, donation was anonymous. And that, uh, again, very grateful to this person or individual or that donated that hundred dollars and appreciate any, anyone that, uh, utilizes our library and is, is fond enough to give us a donation. I think that's great.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think that, um, doing anonymous shows, you know, just giving a little bit and it, uh, not looking for any recognition. It's, it's huge. So, um, we vote already?
Not yet.
No.
No. Joel, you're on it. All in favor of accepting the hundred dollar anonymous donation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, gentlemen, we'll start on the end. Mr. Purpich, if you'd like to let us know of anything that came up or anything that you have coming up that you'll be a part of?
Yeah. Having coming up, we have an airport, uh, authority, uh, meeting tomorrow, um, three thirty at the airport. Uh, there's, it's quite an agenda, um, going forward. Has to do some legal, um, counsel and setting up a legal, legal group within, within the airport authority. There's a whole bunch of things going on. Um, I had just gotten on this committee, um, and then this year, so I'm just kind of catching up on what's going on, but, uh, yeah, it's, it's kind of a, looks like a heavy load, uh, tomorrow for our meeting. So I'll, I'll keep you posted on what's going on.
Brazil, anything on yours?
I probably used up more than my allotted time.
Right. Mr. Rousey, anything?
I will take care of your allotted time and maybe some of the mayor's.
Fire away, sir.
Okay. Uh, we had an HRA meeting. And, uh, the issue that we've been having with the doors seems to be coming to an end. It's, they've all passed muster. They were tested. There were no complaints. They weren't freezing up and it seems like, like it's been put to bed as far as convenience and safety for people. How it all fared it out between attorneys and the construction and the providers and everything, that was a sticky wicked, but I think that it ended up to everybody's satisfaction where we didn't eat a lot of that and they didn't have to pay for all of it. So it sort of worked out to everybody's advantage, but that is, uh, now sort of in the rearview mirror. So we're, we're moving on.
Good.
The audit came in. That was, was wonderful. We're, we're in good shape. Of course, still being, uh, HRA, the, uh, internal flux of the federal government could have some effect on the future of, uh, fundings and stuff like that. But so far you haven't really felt any of those effects. So that's HRA. Next. We had EDA meeting where we discussed, uh, and I believe you, I can correct me if I'm wrong, that, uh, we've stepped into a little bit of the phase two of the project. Where, uh, one of our members, uh, spearheading, uh, what I call the foliage department, uh, trees, shrubs, stuff that's, uh, uh, well within the cost frame, but we want pretty, we don't want plain, so flowering. There's a lot more goes into than this poor old hunter's head, you know, would imagine, but we got that's going on and, and then of course we're going to ease into the second phase as money's become available that are directed towards that project. But it's, rest assured, it's not done yet. And it's going to get a little bit prettier as we go along. But there's some ideas there. Also, the overlook, I believe, was, uh, brought up. And as everybody, in case you don't know, it's not open yet. And I think, Jerry, what time we have, May first, someplace in there today it's open. It depends on the road condition and stuff and dryness and everything. But there's been significant improvements up there that we're looking at things that might enhance that location because it is sort of unique in itself. And we discussed this, that and the other thing. But what came out of it mostly was perhaps, uh, as you see on tall buildings in other locations, the big binoculars that are, you know, stationary there and people, not the kind. not the kind that I used to go to Chicago and have to drop the quarters in all the time, you know, because that way we don't want to encourage any type of money handing out there. But I think that, uh, two were reasonably priced, we're still in the process of pricing and stuff. One to the west or to the south, and then one, of course, to the north, and there's different types. My biggest concern, and I'd love to see that up there, but it's out of the way, uh, it's open all night. That's why we can't have nice stuff syndrome, I'm afraid of vandalism and such, and these are, they're not cheap. Uh, you know, as far as cheap goes, and, uh, I don't know how you can secure something like that, so that might be something that we'll have to discuss, or and, and I know the police are stretched in, I'm not gonna suggest they send a guy up there every year or every hour to make sure the counter, the binoculars are still there. Locking the gate at night, you know, half, half of the view up there is at night, not only for stargazers, during meteor showers, during full moon events, but you can see a long way, and you can see where this tunnel is, that's Beol, that's outside of Hibbing, you can see this from up there, and that's unique, to see that, to be able to see that far. But that's my biggest concern would be, to how we could keep something like that nice up there, but that was also discussed, and I can't remember if I'm missing anything, Jackie, or not. I think the, the shack out at the Lincoln Place is gonna be skirted and fixed, and see how things pop into my mind? Too many hockey pucks. Uh, and that's, uh, HRA. Rams, went to a Rams meeting, lovely meals. Can't believe it, whatever, I fell into that one, boys, and I drew the short straw, I never thought it came with a free lunch. Anyway, uh, we had a nice, uh, PowerPoint dissertation by, uh, the Rock Doctor, and he's got two other kids that are doctors, he said, but he's the only one that's a doctor, he's a geologist for D and I. But he did the big helium, hydrogen drilling project up there, what's going on, where it's at, in the permitting process, said the tax, how they're gonna tax, said who's gonna get the money. And it's very interesting, and, and if that thing takes off, no pun intended, is helium, uh, it's gonna affect this whole region, this whole county, this whole upper Arrowhead area is gonna benefit from this type of development, so uh, we'll see where that's, where that, what that's going, but we were brought up to date, and their, their, their timeline is going along as they predicted, so they're looking at a few more years before we really start getting shaky about it. Uh, what else, so they went over a few bills that were going on, down at the legislation, and one that would affect us was a sort of like a stipend bill, I call it, or they're looking at, uh, a stipend like two dollars a head for your population. So, you know, we're looking at sixty-four, sixteen hundred dollars, who can get out of that, but that's still in committee and stuff. Other than that, uh, that's about it, as far as what's, oh, there's a couple of things going on, one was today, and then next week, down at, uh, for the members, of course, I won't be able to finish any of them.
And that's one thing I was gonna mention to everybody on the board is Rams has things going on all the time. And there is no way that myself and John could even try to tackle all of them, so if you're ever interested, like they just did last week on Thursday, an entire day on Brownsfield, and they brought people to different ones, they explained it, the whole nine yards, they had an event, I think it was at IMAC.
It was at, uh, IMAC.
Yeah, and then they took a bus and they brought them to different places and showed things, again, like I said, uh, Paul Peltier, who is Executive Director, is that title? He, he has just got that whole group just moving, there's so much going on that, like I said, even the two of us combined could barely keep up, they have a event today.
Something that's, uh...
Bringing people from Iron Range down to the state, and I mean, they, they're, they're paying for everything, they get you down there.
Loading up in Laschok and bring you down there and bring you back.
Yeah, be a part of what's going on at the state level, and, um, so if you're ever interested, please, either go to their site or...
They have the big Ranger Party, I think, next week or week after that, they really like to see some people on there.
They do, they do.
Same poll.
And at the end of the day, John is not wrong, they, I've never left anything if done hungry.
No, no, you are well provided for.
Yeah, I brought, I think it was rigging Tony like this, I brought home, but it's, besides the point, that's not why I go. Uh, but no, honestly, gentlemen, there's, there's so much that Rams is doing that it's, 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 would be hard, I think, for the group to keep up with, so if you're ever in the mood thinking, I wanna try something, give it a whirl. Uh, Media Group, uh, we were gonna meet during the middle of a snowstorm, um, Mr. Larson decided to postpone that moving forward, um, and I've been just following a, a lot of different things, and the last thing I went to was, I was really interested to see who's gonna show up at the Highway fifty-three improvement meeting, and there, there, that was a, that was a full room up at the school, and, um, Alex did a great job with his counterparts up there, talking about what the county's doing and what the state's is doing, getting everybody ready for this, this event, and there were a lot of great questions from a lot of people, um, there are a lot of questions, obviously, by our business owners, being concerned, um, and that is when the slip ramp came back to my attention again, so, uh, it's something that we might need to put on a, you know, one of our work meetings to discuss, um, where that's at, I understand why it's being held up right now, but just maybe putting it back in the process of conversation and whatnot, so that we can help those business owners better understand where we're at regarding things like that, because it's, it's a concern for them, obviously, that slip ramp being one that would be done by the rink, so, um, but no, it was a great, great turnout at that event, so, uh, I was, I was pretty impressed. Um, I mean, there's a bunch of little things here, and I've been chatting with you guys a little bit about all of it, but, um, I just, I'm excited about where we're going forward with, uh, Mr. Streeter, and seeing what he has, a work meeting is gonna be put together as soon as we know that he has three renditions of our ideas, so that we can then hopefully talk about them, get the city's feedback at the Town Hall meeting on April thirtieth, so that we can start to move forward, and Mr. Purpatch and I will have some conversations afterwards, get some things planned out, and it's a good day, things, things are moving forward through the city of Eglith, and it excites me. With that being said, Deputy Chief, anything on your mind or anything that was told to you to relay, because he didn't wanna say it?
No, just asking the public to bear with us through the end of the month with the calendar perking. Before, uh, so hopefully we can get the, uh, streets swept fairly official even. May first, there's no more, no more tickets for the summer, so.
Back when neighbors become neighbors again.
Versus fighting over the parking spot.
The end of Keller Park, and it's all war. What they're talking again, that's they see the light again at the tunnel, and say, aye, now again, that, get out of my spot. That's tight up there, my friend.
Warning sign is saying, what?
They don't understand it, O street parkers, O street parkers don't get it, it's us that have to struggle back and forth, back and forth with six months. But it's necessary, guys, it's necessary, understood, and sweeping's very important, so.
Absolutely, with sweeping coming, Jerry, what's the timeline on that?
Uh, we're waiting for one more part, uh, we're hoping to be out this week sometime. We put it off because we knew we were getting the snow last week, so. Hopefully we can get Brown Road this week.
You know our budget's tight, right? So let's recycle some of that stuff that goes in the sweepers, bring it back out to the puddle.
You got the forty tons laying on the street right now, so feel free to bring that back.
They thought about that, but it's considered sort of contaminated, they don't let you use it, because it's, you know.
It's true.
They don't let us use it. Let's scapegoat again. You got an escape clause for everything, don't you?
You bet.
Anything else coming from Public Works, Jerry?
Nope, I'm gonna stop away my head. Thank you.
We had a, we had a nice Parks and Recreation meeting a little over a week ago. Good progress, people there are positive and ready to move forward, so more things at our work meeting to chat about, but they had some great ideas, and they're willing to hear what things that we can kind of chat about, too, so.
And Jackie, you and Steph looked into the records about the Park Commission, that there is another opening for, uh,
I...
Out, out of the council?
I have an individual who expressed desire to join said commission.
I did, I did too.
So, uh, anyway, I just instructed her to pick up an application from Stephanie, so, didn't mean to jump in, but, you know.
Yeah.
You got a caller on, you feel free, so, um, Jerry, you're good.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all.
Yep. Jackie, is there anything that you had on your mind that hasn't been mentioned today?
No, there isn't.
Wonderful. Joel, perfect, we're glad to have you.
Yes, we are.
Nothing, nothing to be said?
None this time.
All right, we appreciate you being here as well. With that being said, I will, uh, call this meeting adjourned. Gentlemen, groups here, have a wonderful evening.
Excellent.